All right, we are good to go. So I will call the Tuesday 22nd, 2017 Gardner Planning Commission Meeting to Order. If anyone will please rise and state the Pledge of Allegiance with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll now move into the roll call portion of the agenda, starting on my right.
Roberts here.
Brady here.
Mater here.
Freeman here.
Austin here.
Coram is present. Moving into the consent agenda. All matters listed within the consent agenda have been distributed to each member of the Planning Commission for study. These items are considered to be routine and will be enacted upon by one motion with no separate discussion. If separate discussion is desired on an item from either the Planning Commission or from the floor, that item may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda. Is there any item any member of the commission would like to have removed from the consent agenda?
No, thank you.
Any item any member of the public would like to have removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
So moved. Tuck it.
We have a motion made by Brady with a second by Freeman that we approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with all in favor. Moving on, regular agenda, item number one. Multi-tenant retail building final development plan, FDP-17-02. Consider a final development plan for a multi-tenant retail building to be located at 915 East Lincoln Lane. Paul Peck of Lux Architects applicant, two and long property owner of record. Do we have a presentation from staff this evening?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Planning Commission. My name is Michelle Cricks, planner with the City of Gardner. And this evening, we will be discussing the final development plan case 1702 for a multi-tenant retail building located at 915 East Lincoln Lane, east of Moonlight Road and south of East Lincoln Lane. The lot is a single vacant lot located within the New Century Plaza Development, which was originally approved with a preliminary development plan in 2003 and has been slowly built out in stages since. The lot for consideration this evening is one of the last lots to be developed. This is a 1.2 acre lot, Zone CP2, which is a planned general business district and is surrounded by other retail uses noted on your screen in red and vacant land noted on your screen in green. The City of Gardner Comprehensive Plan does show this site planned for regional commercial and the proposed use of a multi-tenant commercial building for retail is consistent with the comprehensive plan. The lot is adjacent to a public right-of-way to the north and an internal drive to the south. Along the west property line, railroad tracks are present serving the City of the New Century Stormwater infrastructure, oh, excuse me, the site has existing utility infrastructure such as electric, gas, sewer, and water. Stormwater infrastructure is currently not present, although inlets are proposed. The applicant has not provided a stormwater study for review by the Public Works Department and staff has proposed a stormwater study to be provided prior to the issuance of a building permit as a condition of approval. So up on your screen, I've provided a couple photographs of the site as is. You can see that it is raw land. The slide on the upper left is a view from East Lincoln Lane and the slot or the photograph at the bottom right is a view from the internal drive to the south. So just to kind of demonstrate what the raw land looks like at this time. The site layout proposed by the applicant complies with the preliminary development plan approved in 2003. Access into the site is by either East Lincoln Lane on the north side or by the internal drive on the south. Along the property line, along the north property line, a six-foot sidewalk has been proposed, which will connect to the existing sidewalk on the east and west side of the lot. The applicant has also proposed a nine-foot pedestrian connection from the sidewalk along East Lincoln Lane into the site. The building is proposed to be 25 feet in height with tower elements at each corner. The facade of the building is proposed to be a combination of ephesus, brick, and precast stone, which match other materials used in development. A six-foot, four-inch trash enclosure is proposed at the southwest corner of the lot and is proposed to be constructed of the same materials of the building. The applicant is requesting a deviation to the Gardner Land Development Code regarding required foundation planting. Per Section 17-8-030A of the Gardner Land Development Code, foundation planting for non-residential districts shall exist along at least 25 percent of the street-facing facades and be at least eight feet deep. The applicant has provided foundation planting area, which is 11 feet in depth and three feet width adjacent to the side of the building. The applicant has also provided a second planting area at the northwest corner of the building, but this planting area is separated from the foundation by approximately 10 feet. The intent of foundation planting is to be located directly adjacent to the building facade to aid in softening large areas of hardscape and the facade of the building. Staff believes there is sufficient area for the foundation requirement to be met. With a street-facing facade length of approximately 97 feet, less than 25 feet of the foundation planting landscaping is required. Staff is not supportive of this request and has proposed a foundation planting as a conditional of approval. Along with the required foundation planning, staff has also proposed as conditions of approval that required small trees and shrubs are to be located within the foundation planting bed. Staff recommends the Planning Commission approve the final development plan 1702 for a multi-tenant retail building located at 915 East Lincoln Lane, subject to the following conditions. Number one, provide foundation planting along the north facade, which shall be 25 percent of the length of the building and at least eight feet in depth. Number two, provide three shrubs, or excuse me, provide three small trees within the foundation planting. Number three, provide 10 shrubs within the foundation planting. And number four, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall provide a stormwater study for staff review and the plans for all storm drainage facilities shall have been found to meet the specifications and standards of the city. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Michelle. Do we have the applicant with us this evening for anything they might like to add or comment If so, please come forward, speak your name, and add us for the public record.
Paul Peck, Lux Architects, with the applicant's agent. The reason for our deviation request on that landscape is because the developer for the project has owns and developed many retail buildings sort of like this and he has come across numerous water issues with putting plantings right next to the building and that was the reason for offsetting it a bit. And we do meet the number of plants who are just not right next to the building and that was the reason for that and that's all we have. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. Questions, comments from the commissioners? What do you guys have as far as discussion? We have the applicant with us and staff to answer any questions.
I think obviously the question from the staff recommendation is in regards to the plantings themselves. As I look at this and drove through the sites today to look what the other developments are, you know, entire and front, it doesn't deviate far from what's already existing and you can see with their plantings, the intent was not to shortcut by any means. And then, I apologize if I didn't quite hear your name, but based on that feedback, there was some reason for the developer to want to go through it. So I don't have any problem with that deviation actually in approving that. The number of plantings are very suitable and there are a couple different areas. They've not shortcutted that in any means if you look along the roadside and other pieces. So when that's not the intent, I tend to be a little bit more cooperative and I think it's completely sound for them to ask that and would support removing that from and accepting that deviation.
So you were just, you're just kind of going with item one as striking that deviation or all three of the landscaping?
All three for me and leaving item four would be the way I'd go with it.
Okay. Brad, while I'm on my left side, your thoughts?
Well, I guess my, the only question that comes to mind looking at it is if there's a concern of water, there's are, there's still, and I don't know the total footage, but there's still several feet of frontage planting or not frontage planting, facade plantings occurring. So was, is there something being done different to those so they don't present a water concern or?
I assume you're referring to the west side?
West and the little spur on that faces east.
Yeah. To meet Gardner's glazing requirements, pretty much both the north and south sides, the entire strip has to be storefront. Where that is foundation planning is shown is not storefront, it is solid wall. So it helps mediate the water infiltration in those areas.
I do have one question, I'm sorry Brad, while you're up here, about the planting area. If we could pull that up, Michelle, the overhead viewing that shows the plantings and everything, circle right here. My only concern is the width of the sidewalk on the top and to the left. But to make sure it's still compliant from an ADA perspective, I know they could go below, but if they go around that corner, does it still meet all of the requirements from a design perspective?
Yes, I don't remember the dimensions off the top of my head, but I believe it's around six foot around it, so.
I couldn't tell from the drawing, so that's, I just wanted to ask and make sure that that was the case. Great, thank you.
So you're kind of filling along the same lines, Brad, of Heath and striking all three, or are you just focused on one or two, three, all of them?
I don't know that I've made up my mind either way, so just kind of listen to what everybody else has to say and what his responses were. But if, I guess question for staff then would be if, do they have the correct number of plantings in their little additional area if we consider that foundation planning?
Yes, they met all the quantity requirements.
Feel comfortable, Brad?
Yeah.
All right. Tim?
I support the staff recommendation.
100% staff recommendation. Okay.
I, looking at this, I mean, I feel like, and I did drive around over there too, that what they're proposing is actually seems like more plants than some of the others have. I'm good with striking one, two, and three and leaving just four. I think they've done a great job and I like how they added the little area that Heath was just talking about to make sure that they have accessibility, but I like that they've added a little planning there to break up it, break the, break up the facade.
The facade.
Yeah, I'm good with deleting one through three.
Okay. Okay. If everyone feels comfortable, I think everyone, as far as the commission, myself, I am leaning towards Torrey's and Heath's assessment, it does seem to kind of fit with the other buildings in the area, so I would be comfortable as well supporting that, striking of one through three. So if we don't have other questions or comments, we can entertain a motion if anyone would like to make one on this.
After review of application, FDP-17-02, a final development plan for New Century Plaza Number Two, Lot Five, located at 915 East Lincoln Lane, parcel ID CP66960000005, and final development plan dated August 9th of 2017 and staff report dated August 22nd, 2017, the Planning Commission approves the application, provided the following condition is met. Item one, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall provide a stormwater study for staff review and the plans for all storm drainage facilities shall have been found to meet the specifications and standards of the city.
Second. We have a motion made by Freeman with a second by Roberts, that after review of application, FDP-17-02, a final development plan for New Century Plaza Number Two, Lot Five, located at 915 East Lincoln Lane, parcel ID CP669600000 space 0005, and final development plan dated August 9, 2017, and staff report dated August 22nd, 2017, the Planning Commission approves the application, provided the following condition is met. Item one, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall provide a stormwater study for staff review and the plans for all storm drainage facilities shall have been found to meet the specifications and standards of the city. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Item passes with the majority in favor, four to one. Four ayes, one nay. Thank you. Item number two on the regular agenda, Copper Springs Six Final Plat, FP-17-04. Consider a final plat for Copper Springs Six, located at the intersection of University Drive and West 162nd Street. Todd Allen Brand of Payne &amp; Brockaway, applicant, Gardner Property Partners, property owner of record. Do we have a staff presentation this evening?
Yes. Good evening, Commissioners. Michelle Loniger, principal planner. Just to, and I forgot to put in a reference map, this property is part of the original overall big Copper Springs that was zoned in 2003. You're looking north of 163rd Street and the extension of University Drive to the north. This is, ooh, phase six of, yeah, of revised preliminary development plan. Since 2016, you've seen phase four and five final development plans. So this is actually a portion of the last portion, if that makes sense, of the preliminary plat. Speaking with the developers, they're purchasing a larger portion of the property and they will include what was left over of the original phase six in with a phase seven. So original phase six was a little bit bigger than this. Just some staff findings. The plat is consistent with the comprehensive plan, which shows a single-family residential. It's consistent with a preliminary plat, meets the standards of the Land Development Code as far as street layout, lot sizes, lot layout, and the excise tax levied at the amount of $88,165.55 will be due with the, prior to the recording of this plat. Again, here's what the plat looks like. Additionally, with the final plat, we require a street tree plan. There is a condition of approval that a couple of the street trees be moved. Zoom in here. The orange line is the sidewalk and the red line is a curb line. The code identifies that the street trees go between those two in the right-of-way area unless it, those trees would be, then be in your site triangles. They are shown here in gray, so we would recommend that those two trees be pulled forward. Pretty simple. Staff recommends approval of the final plat for Copper Springs Six, subject to the following condition. Move the two street trees shown on Lot 27 towards the street. The excise tax in the amount of $88,165.44 shall be paid to the city prior to recording. The construction plans for any utilities, infrastructure, or public facilities shall meet all technical specifications and public improvement plans shall be submitted and approved prior to the release of the plat for recording and recommends forwarding the plat to the governing body with the recommendation to accept the dedication of right-of-way Here's the recommended motion, which is the same.
Great. Thanks, Michelle. Do we have the applicant with us this evening? Anything else to add? If so, please state your name and address for the public record.
Todd Allen Brand, Payne &amp; Brockaway, 426 South Kansas Avenue, Olathe, Kansas. I'd like to thank you guys for giving us the opportunity to come forward tonight and we're in agreement with the staff report, but here to answer any questions you'd like. And I know the future developer that's coming in is really excited to continue with this development, so he's looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions or comments from staff? We do have the applicant present. Seems pretty straightforward, but we have time for questions. If we don't have any, I'll entertain a motion on this item.
After review of application, FP-17-04, a final plat for Copper Springs Six, a plat dated July 31st, 2017, and tree street plan dated August 8th, 2017, and staff report dated August 22nd, 2017, the Planning Commission approves the application, provided the following conditions are met. One, move the two street trees shown on Lot 127 along 162nd Street to the street side of the sidewalk. Two, the excise tax in the amount of $88,165.44 shall be paid to the city prior to recording. And three, the construction plans for any utilities, infrastructure, or public facilities shall meet all the technical specifications and public improvement plans shall be submitted and approved prior to release of the plat for recording and recommends the governing body accept dedication of right-of-way easements.
We have a motion made by Austin with a second by Freeman, that after review of application, FP-17-04, a final plat for Copper Springs Six, and plat dated July 31st, 2017, and street tree plan dated August 8th, 2017, and staff report dated August 22nd, 2017, the Planning Commission approves the application, provided the following conditions are met. Item number one, move the two street trees shown on Lot 127 along 162nd Street to the street side of the sidewalk. Two, the excise tax in the amount of $88,165.44 shall be paid to the city prior to recording. And three, the construction plans for any utilities, infrastructure, or public facilities shall meet all technical specifications and public improvement plans shall be submitted and approved prior to the release of the plat for recording and recommends the governing body accept dedication of right-of-way and easements. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with all in favor. Thank you. All right. Regular agenda item number three. Comprehensive Plan Amendment. Consider and hold a public hearing regarding comprehensive plan amendments to Chapter Two, Community Profile pertaining to community facilities and infrastructure. Chapter Four, Vision, Goals, and Objectives pertaining to community infrastructure and sustainability. Chapter Seven, Community Facilities and Services. Chapter Ten, Sustainability Framework. And Chapter Eleven, Implementation to Incorporate Information from the Recent Master Plan Updates and Completed Action Items. So we'll go through a staff presentation first, then we'll go through the motion of the public hearing, see what comments there might be, and then we'll move into a discussion. So with that, good evening.
Good evening, Commissioners. Kelly Drake-Woodward here to present regular agenda item number three, the 2017 amendments to the comprehensive plan. Also, Michelle Cricks will be presenting a portion of this presentation. So just as a background, the comprehensive plan was adopted in July of 2014 and then in June of 2017, the Planning Commission initiated the amendment to add Chapter 12, capital improvements element. That has not yet gone to the governing body. It's going to the governing body in September. July 25th, the last meeting, you held a public hearing and you adopted Chapter 12, CIE, by resolution and recommended approval to the governing body. Also, at that meeting, you initiated these amendments to incorporate updated information from recent master plans and studies and to strengthen the implementation plan. And so this evening, we're holding a public hearing and considering those proposed amendments for recommendation to the governing body. So we're just going to go through a summary of the proposed amendments, starting chapter by chapter, and then you can have your public hearing. Starting with Chapter Two, Community Profile. The first portion of that chapter is sort of like a sneak peek at just basic characteristics of community facilities and infrastructure and the governing structure. So as far as the introduction to this chapter, we highlighted City Hall, Senior Center, and the fairgrounds, which create kind of the civic center in the heart of Gardner, and also left the part of it, the current part of it that highlights the historical society and museum, and added a mention of parks and trails. So as far as the section on local government characteristics, we decided to make it less about the buildings and more about the governing structure because Gardner is a little unique and now we have all these citizen advisory committees and we'd like to highlight that. Also, the public works characteristics, we've had some changes in structure and so water and wastewater activities have been transferred to the new utility division. So public works include engineering and airport divisions and their primary responsibility is transportation infrastructure, stormwater management, erosion control, and also the airport. And they include GIS services, so updates reflect that. And as far as the utility department characteristics, they do have an electric and line maintenance divisions along with the water and wastewater divisions. So there's quite a bit of new information in there. And then mostly, the rest of the introduction is just updated information. The fire protection district, for instance, we reported their call information, which is an increase in total calls, but pretty much a stable number of calls in Gardner. The police department, we'll focus on them in a more focused update in the future, but for now, we just reported their bike squad, the narcotics detection enforcement, and moving the code enforcement to the police department rather than being in the Business and Economic Development Department. For the school district, it's pretty amazing, but we have two new schools already, and then the Advanced Technical Center and the Culinary Program to report. And the library has a little more accurate count system in place now, and so we reported their counts and they are also increasing. And we included the information that they do have public meeting rooms. Okay, I'm going to turn it over to Michelle and she's going to talk to you about the remainder of the changes in Chapter Two.
Good evening, Commissioners. Michelle Cricks, planner with City of Gardner. And this evening, I'll be presenting updates to demographics proposed for the City of Gardner Comprehensive Plan. I'll be touching on the highlights of the updates rather than go through each graph step by step. In the 2014 plan, I do want to note that a lot of the information that was provided by ESRI, business analysis software, and ESRI is short for the Environmental Systems Research Institute, and that software is not available to the city. So therefore, for the update, the staff has obtained a lot of the data for the comprehensive plan, mostly from the United States Census Bureau American Community Survey. This survey is conducted on an annual basis. And unlike the decennial census, which is conducted every 10 years between March and August and designed to collect data on all persons living in the U.S., the American Community Survey is collected each month on a small random sample of the U.S. population, and that is used to measure the constant changing social and economic characteristics of the U.S. population. So first, let's go over the population projections outlined in the plan. In the 2000 plan, as I've already stated, ESRI business software was used. So for what we've done for the update is that staff has used two forms of information for the update. First, the 2007 population study conducted by the Community Solutions Group, which that study was provided to the Planning Commission at the July Planning Commission meeting as part of the CIE amendment. Secondly, the information provided by Mid-America Regional Council, also known as MARC. So on in front of you is a graphic table, which also mirrors the table that was provided in the population study from the Community Solutions Group. This has a baseline projection, a high projection, and a low projection. And the Community Solutions Group considered the population within city boundaries only and these projections were based along with target densities, migration, and natural And the MARC information provided, which is also part, which this information was also provided in the 2014 plan, however, the information from the 2014 plan, however, the information from the Mid-America Regional Council is analyzed by census tracts rather than city boundaries. Six census tracts encompass the City of Gardner and also include areas outside the city limits, and what percentage of the county those census tracts will make up. You'll notice the difference between the baseline projection for the 2016 population study and the MARC is different for the year 2040, and you'll notice that difference is a little over 4,700 persons. By this time projected in Gardner, according to the MARC study, those who live within the City of Gardner, plus with those who live outside the city limits within census tracts, will be a little over 5% of the county population. We felt it was important to provide both this information, since we have the new study with the Community Solutions Group, but we also have information from a local regional resource such as the Mid-America Regional Council. So we provided both of those information within the comprehensive plan. On this next slide in front of you, you'll notice that the median household income for the City of Gardner has increased from $64,566 annually in 2010 to $67,422 annually in 2015, which is a little over a 4% increase for the city over a five-year period. Next, with the help of our Public Works Department, we have updated the land use map, or, excuse me, land use graph. The largest changes from the 2014 comprehensive plan include changes to the utility, the infrastructure, and the vacancy, which in 2014 was 21.9% of the land use, and that has increased to 2017 to 39.2%. Agricultural land use went from 32.8% in 2014 to 39.02 in 2017. Rose and rail went from 3.3% in 2014 to 15.48 in 2017, and commercial land use actually went down from 5.6% down to 2.36% in 2014. Finally, another item I'd like to call your attention to is the number of annual new residential building permits issued through the end of 2016. You will notice after a large number of building permits issued between 2003 and 2005, there was a dramatic decline as the Great Recession approached in 2008. However, after the 2008 recession, there were small fluctuations in the number of new residential building permits issued through 2015. However, it is important to note the increase of new residential building permits issued in 2016 was up from 2015.
I missed that last part. Did you say what the building permits are for 2017 are so far?
I'm sorry?
For 2017, do we know how many building permits have been at this point?
No, no, I'm sorry, we don't have that information.
For new homes?
Yes.
For new homes, we've had probably about 75 to 80 so far.
Okay.
Are there any other questions you'd like to ask of Michelle before we continue?
The commercial and residential percentages, if you go back in slides, like 2.36 and 3.85, or 86, can you compare that to previous studies? Is this about, is this consistent, or we see any growth at all in commercial and industrial?
Did you want to?
Go the other way.
I think what happened is that our department has these GIS capabilities now, but not necessarily back when the comprehensive plan was put together. So I think they were put together by two different groups of people, and I think this is just a more accurate view of what it is. We're not sure how they came up with the existing land use map before.
Challenging the numbers, I just wondered if you could compare it to three years ago, five years ago, 10 years ago, are those numbers consistent? Commercial had gone down from like almost 5.5% since 2014.
But all I'm saying is maybe it really didn't, it's just a change in how it was counted.
More strict analysis, yes.
Right. Because we don't have the source of the information that was provided in the 2014 plan, so we don't really know exactly how they came up with it. So... All we can do is start with accurate information now, and then going forward, we'll have that continuity.
Which is good to know. Okay, I think we're good to continue on.
Okay.
Okay.
So in Chapter 4, that's the Vision, Goals, and Objectives chapter. We just slightly modified the vision statement to add the information on the utilities department, and the city is an electric utility provider. For growth and annexation objectives, we added funding and developing utility and public services capital projects consistent with the city's growth management strategy, the land use plan, and other sub-area plans, and you've seen that before in the CIE, requiring annexations before extending city public services and infrastructure, and ensuring those utility services will be efficiently and reliably provided when the development occurs. Then the community infrastructure section, the objectives mostly relate to level of service, growth, and efficiency, or the goal statement. And then the objectives deal with best practices, ongoing risk assessments and studies, incentive strategies, review of our fee structure, and community education. And then one of the most important objectives in there is new decision criteria to help determine investment in community infrastructure. And so these are outlined here. So the idea is to create a balance among all these considerations when planning for investments in public infrastructure, facilities, and services. So you would be weighing the initial and ongoing costs against reasonable expectations of long-term benefits, public safety and health impacts, environmental impacts, cost efficiencies, long-term viability of those assets, compatibility with adjacent development, and support of adjacent development, the ability of the asset to be used for multiple purposes or to serve diverse interest groups, and the ability of the asset to be updated or repurposed in the future, say for new technology or obsolescence. And then there are some sustainability objectives, and basically, we added information in there to confirm the idea of the compact development and connected green spaces, using trees or understanding trees as critical infrastructure, like other public infrastructure because of the benefits they provide, and coordinating their placement with the placement of utilities, encouraging joint use of utility corridors for other things like recreation, stormwater management, and appropriate non-motorized connections when possible. Supporting NIMS, which is a National Incident Management System training and other hazard mitigation, not only for city employees, but also sharing that information with citizens, and ensuring, and there's various ways you could do this, but just trying to ensure that there are storm shelters within our community for residents, like for example, for the mobile home park residents that don't have basements and places to go. So that is the Chapter 4 summary. The next chapter that we did extensive amendments to is Chapter 7, Community Facilities and Services. In updating the introduction, we highlighted the impact of community infrastructure and explained the roles of the various departments in the development review process, and explained the various processes and permits that we have at this time. And then there are some recommendations dealing with the development permitting and licensing process, such as researching other communities for best practices, creating an online development hub, kind of a one-stop shop, implementing online permitting, giving people timely notification of regulatory changes when we do have amendments, and creating a web-based interface with the public to share data, take comments and suggestions, and answer questions. So we had to create a new section for the electric system, and we outlined this with profiles, risk assessments, and recommendations for each type of infrastructure. So in the profile, basically, we're just providing the customer data, summary of infrastructure, in this case, some service area maps and substation maps, and then the benefits of the local control of our electric system. We tried to choose metrics for measuring the risk for each type of infrastructure, and for the electric system, it would be per capita energy use, trying to get that to decrease, doing a rate study, and trying to either maintain or increase the affordability for people. The number of partners, trying to increase the number of partners so that we have more options in our electrical system and the provision of those services. For risk factors, part of the issue is that we are tied and depend upon the regional transmission system of which we don't have control. Another risk factor is the city's ability to fund those expansions when they're needed. It's hard to predict the timing and the amount of expansion that's needed, and that's partly because it's hard to predict future land uses, and so then you're never quite sure the amount of maintenance and costs that you might have related to climate conditions and usage. So those are some of the risks. Also, when temperatures are rising, it seems that our system is less efficient. So we tried to identify those risk factors so they could be taken into consideration. And then the recommendations, reliability recommendations pertain to distribution feeder line expansion to support growth, undergrounding more of that distribution system so it's more reliable. For capacity, we want to anticipate future capacity needs while preserving local control. Conservation, we want to partner with residents to reduce peak load demand and implement energy conservation measures in all public facilities. And for efficiency, identify city consumers who are at risk, given the rising energy costs, if that's the case, and then work with them to encourage energy conservation. Similarly, identify our highest-consuming energy customers, and also work with them to implement efficiencies. And you can use things like special assessments to fund those improvements, and, I mean, there's some implements that will let you have those be payable through the energy cost savings, so that's something to consider for our larger users. And then continue to implement energy-efficient fixtures and facilities, like LED lights. Okay, for the water system, again, this is summary of infrastructure and the customer data in the profile. The metrics are availability of data, so we want to increase the amount of data we have. Replacement of aging infrastructure, we want to increase that replacement. Per capita use decrease. Inadequate flow, we want to decrease the instances that we have inadequate flow, and we want to decrease the instances of customer complaints. So risks relate to the allocation of water rights that impact quantity of water available, our storage capacity, increased usage by customer needs and precipitation. We have many components that are at or near capacity or under capacity already. We have a lack of transmission line redundancy for emergencies. We have efficiency challenges with higher demands over extended periods, and again, it's hard to predict the future use. Recommendations, we had some general recommendations on using a computerized maintenance management system so that we can do an annual review and analyze performance and then reevaluate reinvestment. Perform a rate study and consider implementing a sliding scale structure based on usage so that we would encourage residential customers to use water conservation. For the water supply, we had purchases from Water One, creating that redundant 8-inch raw water line from Hillsdale Lake to the treatment facility, and then monitoring usage and upgrading as needed. For the water treatment plant, start planning for the new water treatment facility for completion within the next 10 years. Clear well storage with emergency backup, upgrading high-service pumps, and then some control and service changes for storage facilities and the low-service booster pumps. And that would involve removing the at-grade and underground storage after we make that Water One purchase. For the distribution system, we would have that redundant 16-inch water line from the treatment facility to the city limit, and replacement programs and annual allocations for pipe and water line replacements. Wastewater system, we had sanitary infrastructure map put together by our department, GIS department, the customer data is in there, and then the summary of the infrastructure. Metrics here, again, pretty similar to the other ones, except for those specific to sanitary systems, which is the overflow frequency, which is obviously, we want to decrease, and extraneous flows, that means other flows coming into the system, which create more treatment needs, and so that we want to decrease that as well. The risks, those flows are hard to anticipate because of an uncertainty about the nature and timing of development. Those extraneous flows come from both public and private sector infrastructure, so we don't have control over all of them necessarily. State restrictions on discharge limits for nitrogen and phosphorus may change, and that's definitely going to impact our operations. And then fats, oils, and grease, or fog, generated from various land uses cause blockages and overflows. Recommendations in general, maybe I won't go through all these, but they're all in the plan there for you, mostly about collecting more data on those overflows and on the fog, and using that computerized maintenance management system. Working on an infiltration and inflow removal program, and also a program for the removal of those fats, oil, and grease, or at least monitoring who's putting them into the system and what methods they have for dealing with them. Collection and conveyance system improvements. And there's like five scenarios for that, so they're all outlined in the plan. And then treatment facility improvements, there are three scenarios based on those future discharge limits that would be set by the state, and then two scenarios for northern and southern expansion. Okay, so then we have Chapter 10, Sustainability Framework. And this chapter just basically pulls all the applicable sustainability recommendations from other sections. The type that you saw that was in blue was just pulled from another section, but it hadn't actually been included in this chapter before, but it's an existing recommendation. And then all the other new recommendations in the Sustainability Framework chapter come from what I just talked about. So not every recommendation is in the Sustainability Framework chapter, this just kind of highlights what relate more directly to sustainability. And then maybe the most important part is our Implementation Chapter updates. The 2014 comprehensive plan recommended creating an action agenda from the extensive policy and program recommendations in that plan, and this was to be updated yearly along with the CIP. So this is our first attempt at creating this table from all of those recommendations that are kind of scattered throughout the whole plan. So we decided to include it as Appendix A, so that when we update it, we can just publish and, you know, the appendix instead of the whole plan, although it may, you know, impact other areas of the plan. We updated the fact that we did do the zoning ordinance update when we did the land development code rewrite, and that code does include a complete streets policy, so that's pretty important to note, that's an accomplishment. And these updates also include information from new master plans and studies, so that was noted in the implementation section. And also noted was the development of the CIE. So I've been working on kind of reformatting that table in Word, it's the same thing that you got, it just works a little better, and it'll be more easily updated, and this is kind of what it looks like. Okay, so what is included in this plan is a code for the goal, objective, or theme that's addressed by each action, and so the idea is that this helps you identify which actions will affect multiple goals and multiple objectives. So also, it has a current status of the action, whether it's achieved, ongoing, or not yet addressed. addressed. And it has the type of action, whether it's mostly administrative action, or if it's a regulatory action, or a capital project, or several of those. So when we contemplate the 2018 updates, then we will probably add another column for a priority ranking. We're just not ready to do that at this point in time. So staff recommends that the planning commission hold a public hearing and adopt Planning Commission Resolution PC 1702 to amend the Gardner Comprehensive Plan to incorporate information from the recent master plans and population study, and update other associated information, and add Appendix A action table, and forward a recommendation approval to the governing
Thank you both, Kelly and Michelle, for the presentation. We'll go through the motion of hosting the public hearing first, and then we'll go into a commission discussion. So this is the opening of the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please come forward, state your name and address for the public record. Individuals, you'll have approximately three minutes to speak. Those representing a group, I'll give you five minutes, but I'm not being too stringent tonight because it's not eight o'clock yet. So anybody wishing to speak on this item, please come forward, state your name and address for the public record. We don't have anyone from the public wishing to speak on this item. I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
We have a motion made by Austin with a second by Brady that we close the public hearing. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries with all in favor, the public hearing is now closed. Okay, commissioners, I ask the question first before we go into discussion regarding grammatical errors, punctuation errors, and et cetera. And we were going to look to the city attorney for how we should best go through those. We don't have city attorney here. So I don't know, Larry, if you maybe could provide a direction, do we need to go through line by line if anyone caught a grammatical error or mistake? Or is that something we could each individually send an email? Or how should we best do that? I mean, do we get it all out of the way first for discussion sake? Or I, that's why I wish we had city attorney here tonight.
When I talked with the city attorney, his main concern was that you are presented with a certified copy of the amendment, and if you depart from that certified copy that we provided you, that you note in your motion exactly what changes you're making to that certified copy.
Okay.
So it doesn't matter whether you do it at the beginning or the end, or whatever, but, you know, I guess be specific if there are grammatical changes.
Okay. Okay, so let's knock that out of the way first. Were there any very specific grammatical errors that anybody caught? Or wants to call that out first? Let's, let's start there with anything grammatical.
So the only thing that I saw was on page three.
Okay.
Underwater distribution, line maintenance division, water distribution. We say we have 120 miles of water mains and over 1,075 fire hydrants. But then on page 25, underwater system, we say we have over 125 miles of water mains and over 1,100 fire hydrants. So we should probably make those the same numbers.
Good job. I read this three times and didn't find one. So you were, okay, so. Page three and page 25, we want to make sure we have the correct, correct miles of water main lines and correct count of fire hydrants. Looks like those are the two bullets, right, Brad, that you captured?
Yeah, and if we just wanted, well, if we want to match page 25, 25 hydrants and five miles, we'll probably get there before too long than our already there.
So it makes sense using the higher number on page 25, replicate on page three.
Or since we say over, I guess we'll go the other direction. I don't care, I just figured that.
Okay, just make it the same. Okay, okay, all right. So, yeah, validate, validate number of water main lines and fire hydrants and place correct number on page three and page 25. All right, other glaring discrepancy, is that anybody else caught that we need to call out first? Okay. All right, so we don't have any of those other items, let's take this chapter by chapter with discussion on potential changes that the commission would like to talk about or ask questions of staff. So let's start with chapter two. Any questions for staff or requested modifications, or just anything within chapter two, let's start there.
No.
Nope. Guys down here? Tim?
Just on page four, going back to the punctuation piece, and I don't even want to hate to bring this up, but technically Gardner Edgerton Unified School District is not hyphenated page, top of page four.
Okay. Okay, grammatical correction there on page four. Anything else you saw, Tim, with a question? Tori, feel free to chime in too, I'm kind of going to, we're doing left side and right side tonight. So I don't think there's, I mean, this is pretty much like straightforward facts within chapter two. And it ends on page 17.
Yeah.
I think I'm pretty good with chapter two.
Good? Okay, all right, so that is, those are the items then from chapter two, page four, and then sync at page three and 25 as far as those counts. Okay, chapter four, we'll kind of lean, look over here to my left, Brad Heath, any comments within chapter four?
No.
No? Chapter four, guys, over here?
No.
Okay, chapter four is good, I suppose. Chapter seven. Brad Heath?
No.
Chapter seven?
Just a comment to staff, I felt like that was your most comprehensive section, a lot of additions, particularly on electrical wastewater and water. I felt like the additions were good. Did we pattern this, the content here off another city, multiple cities, or is this new and fresh from our own staff? Just out of curiosity.
Our electric and water plan is pre-updated, so I had to do more research and look for more ideas on that one. The, mostly information in the water and wastewater sections are from the master plans that were developed, except for metrics and risk assessment information, but I'm talking about the recommendations.
In the metrics part, love it. I mean, that's, that's going to make our city stronger, numbers drive decision-making, love it.
Okay, so clear through, oh, Brad, did you have something?
It's not necessarily really to that chapter, I just noticed that if you look back at the certified copy with all of the changes in it, it's actually page 23 and page three. It's page 25 if you look at the one that shows all the edits.
Oh, good. So we'll call out that we're, we're working from the staff report copy, I guess, just for clarity's sake, that we're going through. Okay, all right, so that covers then seven, all right, chapter 10. Brad Heath, guys have anything over here?
No.
Okay. Chapter 10, Tori, Tim?
No.
I have it.
Okay, all right, chapter 11, Brad Heath?
No.
Chapter 11, I'll give you guys a minute to catch up, sorry if I'm going too fast.
The act, were the action plans part of chapter 11? Or is that just, is that just a amendment? What?
The action plan's in Appendix A, but it's mentioned in chapter 11.
I'm good with chapter 11. Okay, give Tim a minute to read the various notes.
11 and page 36.
Anything, yeah, okay, there, the, anything for 11, Tim, or were you good with that?
No.
Okay, all right, so we're good with 11. Okay, so then that leaves us moving into Appendix A. Any changes or questions, Heath or Brad?
No.
Cleaned up very, very well, I just, once again, I want to say thank you for all the codes at the bottom of every single sheet.
It's handy.
I like that, helps.
I have no questions, do you have any certain questions on Appendix A, just the call out? Okay. I think that covers our review. So just to quickly recapture before we entertain a motion, I captured the page four, the hyphenation needs to be removed, and then the numbers need to be synced and corrected on page three and 25.
And I actually did just happen to see something in the tables. Don't know how to describe where this is. I guess it's the last item above sustainability, transportation, and mobility references.
Is that on the action plan, Brad?
It'll be page 36.
Okay, it's page 36, the code we're looking at.
The last one under sustainability land use doesn't have a status or an action type.
Oh, yep, you're exactly right. Good catch.
Okay, well, let's decide on that one.
Okay, yep, let's add it in.
I think the status is not yet addressed. And the type of action is regulatory.
That would be for the farm.
So along with those, the two items we called out, we're going to make a modification, as noted during discussion, modification of Appendix A on page 36. We, I guess, per discussion, we can reference that in the motion, and that should cover Okay. I think that is all, and I would entertain a motion on this item unless the commission feels like we need more time, but feel like we did a good review, it was very well put together, so.
Martin, do we need to do anything with this resolution?
So on this recommended motion, at the end of it, you would say with the following
I move that the planning commission adopt Planning Commission Resolution PC-17-02 to amend the following portions of the Gardner Comprehensive Plan. Chapter two, community profile; chapter four, vision, goals, and objectives; chapter seven, community facilities and services; chapter 10, sustainability framework; and chapter 11, implementation, to incorporate information from the recent master plan updates and studies, update associated information, and add Appendix A action table, and recommend the body, governing body approve the amendments with the following changes. Change one, validate the miles of water mains and number of hydrants within our system and make the two spots where those numbers are referenced consistent. Item two, delete the hyphen between Gardner and Edgerton as referenced on page four in the school district. And change three, within the Appendix A action table, page 36. The last action item under sustainability land use, provide a status code of in and a type of action as R.
Second. Perfect, all right, we have a motion made by Austin with a second by Roberts, that the Planning Commission adopt resolution, adopt Planning Commission Resolution PC-17-02 to amend the following portions of the Gardner Comprehensive Plan. Chapter two, community profile; chapter four, vision, goals, and objectives; chapter seven, community facilities and services; chapter 10, sustainability framework; and chapter 11, implementation, to incorporate information from the recent master plan updates and studies, update associated information, and add Appendix A action table, and recommends the governing body approve the amendments with the three items that have been added during discussion. Item number one being a validation of the water main lines and fire hydrants to correctly reflect the number on both pages. Item two, to remove the hyphen within Gardner Edgerton. And item three would be the modification to Appendix A specifically page 36, as discussed during the August 22nd Planning Commission meeting. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries with all in favor. Great work, guys. Okay, any, I don't see any discussion items per the agenda, is there anything that came up last minute you guys need to bring to our attention? Larry?
Just a quick update, if you haven't watched the last night's video from the city council meeting, they adopted both of the committee recommendations, one and two, from the planning commission meeting last month, which was to accept the text amendments and then an item two, first one was text amendments, which they adopted, and the item two was to accept the denial, I always say this backwards, accept the denial of the occupations by allowing, to allow massage therapists as a home occupation. And then went on to approve the recommended changes in chapter 515. So all of the items that you had approved last month went to them, and they have approved them as recommended.
Great. Thanks, Larry. Another one? Go ahead, Kelly.
So we are having another steering committee meeting with our consultants for the Gardner Main Street Corridor Plan on September 12th. And we decided it would be good to invite you all to come to a meeting before that steering committee meeting, kind of get updated on what's been happening, provide them with some feedback, it's kind of a key time to provide them with some feedback, I know you expressed some concerns when I gave you the update. So we're going to be sending out a meeting invitation for September 12th at the library from 5:00 to 6:00 P.M.
Okay, great, thank you. Anything else? All right.
Mia?
Yeah?
And maybe we don't need to ask this, Mia, update on filling our two vacancies.
Oh.
So have they?
Have they started the interview process, application process?
They haven't posted the openings or anything? They did post the openings?
Okay.
They received three applications. It is in the mayor's name.
Okay, all right.
Can I say something about that?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, sure, if you've got something to say, sure, yeah, come forward, state your name and address for the public record, sure.
I am Joe Gardenhire, I live at 62, 620 North White. I applied for the position because it was open like two months ago.
Yeah.
Received an email about a month ago, and haven't heard anything since.
Okay.
So I've, I've asked several times about it, and I've heard nothing about it, so.
Okay.
That's where it is. That's where it is.
Hey, thanks for, thanks for the update.
I mean, that's, well, because of that.
Okay.
I keep pushing. I'm trying desperately.
Well, all right.
Good.
Topic.
I mean, it's in the hands of the, of the city council at this point in time, so until the mayor puts it on the agenda and until they take the actions they need to take, we're, we're operating with the people that we have and we're very happy that you all show up, so please continue to do so. And those of you that have applied, we hope to have someone of you on there quickly, so just bear with us as we wait for the city council to take action.
Okay, good. I think we brought that up for clarity's sake. Okay, anything, anybody else?
Yeah, I have two just open questions.
Yeah.
With the Copper Springs development without passing this evening moving forward, do we communicate that back to the school district at all? Because that does obviously make an impact when they're talking about new boundaries as such and population density, so do we depend on them to find out or do we communicate back something to the district?
The district was working on a master plan update, I think last summer. I sat down with their consultants multiple times and went over growth projections and where we have subdivisions that are ready to be filled out, where we have ones that were preliminary platted that we're just, you know, building out and such, so they know about it.
Okay.
You know, we've, I've tried to communicate that to their consultants, so we could say we're growing here, we're going to see growth here, we're going to see growth here, this will fill out, we expect this to happen in, you know, one to five, such like that, so yes.
Okay, and then I have one other que, and, and the comprehensive plan breakup, do we employ at any point, and we may not employ, but do we outsource copy editing? Because I am good at very few things, but one of the things I'm worse at is copy editing. I'm not going to find that missing hyphen, I'm not going to find that common, I can, I, I can review the content and be very comfortable with that and what it states, but if you need me to correct spelling, that's not what I'm going to be good at. So do we, we service that in any way, so someone reviews that's professional in that area, especially when we do have to address a singular type change when we make a resolution to do so? I, I don't think that should fall on the planning commission's shoulders to do, I think it should come to us ready. And ours are technical changes in regards to policy itself, not policy because that's the governing body, but content, not characters, I guess is the best way to put it.
Well, what we do is we review each other's work, we send it over to somebody in administration, they review our work, typically it would be the clerk, but right now it's a management analyst who's looking at it. And there's a lot of information, sometimes hard to catch everything, but.
And I don't fault staff in any ways for doing it, it is, it's a big document. I would suggest that to move forward either to the governing body or to the city administrator to look at opportunities to outsource copy editing for this sort of document, because it's critical that it's done correctly. And again, I, I don't want that to be my, and maybe Tori may have a love of copy editing that I didn't realize. I most certainly do not. So that, that's kind of where I stand, we might need to go down that route when we're doing documents that are this concise and where those characters do matter and changing it takes an action of government, we'd like to avoid those situations.
I also think it might, different attorneys might have different opinions on.
And I'll throw on my attorney hat, frankly, spelling changes and removing of hyphenations and punctuation does not take you making motions to do that. That is, I've done comprehensive plan amendments for years, substantive changes are what needs to be approved. Spelling, you know, come on, we're not going to need to approve changing the spelling of a word to make it correct.
We will pass your recommendation.
I agree with you about, this is not a witness toll.
We'll, we'll pass your recommendation and request on to Cheryl and city administrator and see how we can.
Certainly a thought as a best practice for a high performing organization, I believe is the term, it probably isn't a bad thing to get the practice up. Ditto.
All right, other comments? Nope, nope. Not, all entertaining a motion to adjourn for the.
So moved.
Second.
Very enthusiastic, motion to approve made by Freeman with a second by Austin. All those in favor, please make it by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? He needs adjourned.